Good evening. I want to call the September 26 meeting of the Road Board and School Board Zones Committee. Order please. At this time, I need a motion to approve or amend our minutes from our last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion approved.
Have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Thank you. Two things on our agenda tonight, and they're pretty important. I don't know how you guys feel, but I'm in the mood of getting over the hump and beginning to make some decisions. So let's see if we can head in that direction tonight. Before we're out of here, I'm not saying we're going to make any decisions for weeks to come, but let's kind of zero in on a map that we like. And I think we began to do that at our last meeting. And we'll also talk about the election sequence as we get into that. First off, I want to look at the maps. If you guys have those in front of you, we were looking... I'm sorry.
Mr. Bradger?
Here.
Mr. Dempsey?
Here.
Mr. Holliday?
Here.
Ms. Nail?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Stubblefield?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Present. Jim Estes, the newest member, probably won't be here. He had to have surgery today. It's kind of a shame that you guys keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers as we kind of go forward. Thank you, Ben. I'd kind of like to look at the maps and if we can eliminate, continue that elimination process and see if we can settle on one. And then it would be a lot easier for us to talk about election cycles and other types of things as we go through that. If you have copies of them, and I think I do, I think we've broken them down into scenarios before. And we had two that we kind of liked more than the rest. And one was Scenario 2, and the other was Scenario 4. And I think we began to look at that, and most folks liked Scenario 2 better than 4, if I remember that correct. Maybe not all. So let's talk about that a little bit. Mike, can you bring both of those up? And if there's any way to put them up side by side, could you do that?
Uh, please do that, sir.
Take a minute. And for those of you that have a copy, you may want to put out your copy of the current, which is not only School Board and Zone Board, but the County Commission as well.
The one on the left is Scenario 4. The one on the right is Scenario 2. And the numbers are just the arbitrary numbers we had given to the different zones. We can change those without... however you all wish to do in the future. Match whatever you want to match. So, yeah, I think we'll look at here as the groups of the colors.
Okay.
How things are grouped together.
My memory may not be the best in the world, but I think we kind of zeroed in on those two. And we were talking more about Scenario 2 than 4. But I believe we've got someone who's more interested in 4 than 2.
Oh, man, pretty much early. Shook my head. Now that I've been reminded what it looks like.
I think some of the discussion, and once again, we were trying to get as many communities together as we possibly could. And number 2 seemed to do that a little bit more. If I'm not mistaken, that was correct. Why didn't Mike? Do you remember that?
They're almost identical, other than what they do with the, kind of the northern part of the county.
Yeah, basically, the northern half of the county is what's adjusted in between the two of them. The southern half is identical.
Not trying to confuse things. 2 and 4 versus what we have now.
What we have right now? That's the current.
Basically, really, the north, or I guess the west. Northwest right there, we just kind of made that all one thing. That's about the only thing we changed, really. Wow, this is just one, pretty much.
Pretty much.
The only thing we changed was this.
Yeah.
District 20, right, basically.
Which one do you want to compare it to? I've got the current one here.
If you just put it up there, you can see...
Yeah, you got it there. So the one on the left right there is what we have now.
That is what has been approved.
So not a whole lot changed other than District 20, when we kind of added it to... I guess that's what, 6?
That 20 that you called there a minute ago was probably the main reason that we're here.
Right, right.
Sorry, I'm going to make this all look the same.
Okay. I don't mean to make you confused.
Aaron, do you have a comment?
I was just going to point out that one of the criticisms of the northern zone is that it was a little sprawling. And Scenario 4 does achieve the goal of compactness for that zone maybe a little bit better. I think that's worth noting. Between Scenarios 2 and 4, I lean a little bit more in the direction of 4. Of course, there are lots of implications of the different scenarios that I'm very passionate about. But, you know, we'll get to those in due time. But in just comparing these maps, it seems to me that Scenario 4 would give us a compact zone there at that northern area.
Keith, did you have something else?
Now, you talked about where 1 is. Is that the area you're talking about? The 1, over there?
Right. And, yeah, Scenario 4, the green, kind of lime green 3s versus the kind of burnt orange 7s.
I don't know if you can tell me this or not, Mike, probably. From the map layout we have now compared to, let's say, Scenario 2, how many Road Board, School Board people does that put in the same areas?
On Scenario 2?
There's three School Board members.
Turning those on. If you look at all your blue dots, those are School Board members. You look at all the red dots, those are Road Board members. Let me turn off some labels here.
Okay.
So they can see it clear. And one more set of labels turned off here. Looks like the green area would have three School Board members in the same area with Scenario 2.
You got the burnt orange with 2 in it, I think.
Yeah.
New area. Are you going to have two Road Board members out there in that one?
Mm-hmm.
And two Road Board members here, and...
Two in the blue?
No, there wouldn't be 2 here, there'd be 2 here.
Okay.
This one is actually here.
So 2 in 3, 2 in 2, and 2 in 4?
Whatever the numbers y'all come up with for them.
And then School Board members, the only one was affected was... 3 of them is going to be in 1?
3 of them would be in what would be 3, and 2 would be in 7.
Okay. The same thing in Scenario 4. How does that pan out? And again, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to just go by incumbency, but I do want to bring that out. And I want, you know, I guess my whole thing from the get-go is I understand what we're trying to do is kind of solve this one area here, but I want to make sure we're not going to create a whole...
Let's say you got 1 School Board.
And you'd have 3 in 4. 3 School Boards in 4.
And 2 in...
And I think that's it for School Board. And then for Road Board, you'd have 2 in 5. And that looks like it.
So less impact on incumbency in Scenario 4 compared to what we have now?
Correct.
Okay.
Currently, we have no impact.
Right. But I'm just, but out of Scenario 2 and 4, as far as incumbency, 4 would be the lesser of the...
But in 2016 and 18, wouldn't it be changing every...
It would be.
So it might not be that scenario in 2016 and 18.
Then in 4, we eliminate the stretch across the north end of the county from one side to another versus Number 2. Because Number 2, don't we stretch even the, from one side of the county to the other? Yes.
And what's that?
Scenario 2.
Oh, Scenario 2, yes.
The north side of the county, we stretch from the east to the west.
And there again, you know, I have to look at it. I say, I try, I'm open-minded about everything, but I guess I look at it more as far as what you're talking about, the north end of, like, Laverne and all that. It really doesn't affect the Road Board as much as it would School Board.
Right.
Because I know they want to, because, you know, that municipality, just like City of Mardi Gras, takes care of their roads where we don't do that. So I know it's, it impacts the School Board in that area more than it does Road Board.
As far as compactness and continuity, I think, you know, if you look at 4, Number 2, I think you've got, you know, in my opinion, Number 4 is more compact.
It is that. I agree.
What we were looking at from our very first meeting, if you guys will remember right, we're going to try to consider incumbency at some point in time.
Yes.
But right now, let's look at a map that makes sense.
Right.
And then we'll determine those other things, the election cycles and those types of things. And then, I'm not sure where we go from there. I'm not real sure that we, as a committee, personally, each member, is going to be supportive of this. But if we do our job and make some recommendation to the County Commission, it would sound something like this. This Scenario Number 4, okay, is the best-looking map, the most compact map that we've come up with. This is how it affects the incumbents that's in there. This is how it affects the election cycles. And I think our job is pretty much done. We'll let them, and then we, as individuals, can say whether or not we support making a change at all. It's, we can do a number of different things. But what I would like to see, and what we talked about early on, is that our job is to take a look and recommend something, if we can. And that map would be what we would recommend. When it gets to incumbency and those types of things, that's where, in my mind, the Commission will be making decisions as to whether or not we're going to adopt anything. There's also some other considerations to be made. And that talks about election cycles, and that's where we get into the incumbency deal. Nicole Lester is here. And Nicole, have you taken a look at, if we made a change to either one of these, Scenario 2 or Scenario 4, either one of those maps, and there were 2 or 3 incumbents that were, like on the School Board, that were put into one particular area, how would that pan out over the next several election cycles? What would happen?
What we've done is we prepared a map that just shows each of the County Commission districts as they exist in the current school and road board zones. And we've color-coded it by the year of the election. So I'm not making any recommendation on a for or against a change or what type of change, if you all decide you want to change. Basically, I'm just providing the information to you so that you can make an informed decision.
Okay.
And Mr. Curtis is bringing up those maps right now.
Number 1, is our job doable? Is, if there were, if the lines were redrawn and there were School Board members, Road Board members, and let's just talk about School Board members, that were put in the same district, they were on probably different election cycles, or could be on different election cycles, how is that doable? What would we do, what would we do as a county to go to the new map?
That's a great question, and one that I can't answer. We, that would definitely take some collaboration with the state election officials and some attorneys for sure, to try to determine how that would work out. But if you wanted to look at Scenario 2 and then compare it with the map we've prepared in Scenario 4, you can determine whether any of those individuals would be on the same or different election cycles.
I'm assuming that there's going to have to be some of those.
There could be.
I'm pretty sure that there will be. We talked a little bit about the northern end of the county or the northern half of the county, and were a lot of those circles and dots.
We change it a tile, we're going to, no problem.
Oh, yeah.
If we do anything, I don't care, we don't move a 1.
That's right.
We're going to have a problem.
We're going to have to have some type of a change.
That's right.
And I'm not real sure that we need to go a lot further unless we know that it can be done from a legal perspective. I mean, if we're spending hours and hours and hours up here talking about scenarios and maps, and then we get to recommending one, and someone says that we can't do it from a legal perspective, what are we doing here? So that's what we need, is some help from you. Some help from you guys as to what would happen if we did that, okay? But let's just, is this Scenario 2 right here, Mike? That you've got up there?
Scenario 2 right here.
Okay.
On the right.
No, I'm talking about the overlay that you had a minute, a second ago.
Thanks, that should cut it.
Oh, I can actually, what I can do more better if I can display the... I can put the election cycle directly on Scenario 2. Looking at these numbers on your screen, the first number is the Road Board term limit date. All right, well, maybe this school, excuse me. Maybe just a second. Verify this. It is school, sorry. Thank you, Nicole. It is School Board. This is your School Board term expiration date. And the right end one is your Road Board expiration date. The...
Could you say that again?
The one on the left...
Why don't you zoom in just one zone at a time on the poster?
Take the School Board, I mean, the Road Board off and just leave the School Board on there.
I can do that, too. What would be Zone 1 in the Scenario 2 would have 2 areas that have an election cycle ending in 2014, 1 ending in 2016.
And this is pursuant to the private act that's currently in place?
Say that again.
This, these election cycles are pursuant to the private acts that govern that, that are currently in place?
Under the current map that we use with County Commission districts?
Correct.
The one that's been in place for longest anyone can remember. So what would it, what would it take to change that? Like, we've got...
Well, a private act can change a private act. But when you start talking about incumbency and... Certainly, if you have one person whose term is supposed to expire in 2014, and then you have another who's supposed to expire in 2016, you can't shorten the one who's supposed to expire in 2016. So let's just say in the proposed Zone 1 up there, if you do have 2 members who happen to both live in that, within that same zone.
Yes.
Which, as proposed, would be County Commission District 1, 5, and 12. And one person's term expired in 2014, and the other one expired in 2016, then, let's say, both of them wanted to run for reelection. The one whose term expired in 2016 would have to run 2 years early. And if he or she was elected, then you'd have an empty seat for whatever the remainder of that day. You see where I'm going with this? It's really difficult, so...
Well, my question is, the one is 2016. He's already ran, let's see. They would just, they would just, they would just...
Yes.
He's already been elected to a 4-year term. How can you make him take that 2 years away from him?
You can't.
But you wouldn't, he wouldn't be the...
He wouldn't unless you wouldn't run again, unless you wouldn't run against that person.
Now, if he lived in that other zone that's kind of the orange color, then you're not talking about that.
Yeah, right now, the way it's set up, though, is Mr. Young lives all the way in Zone 2. So really, what would happen is you'd probably have a new election in 2014 just to represent that area. More likely what would happen, because there's no incumbent. Well, there, well, generally, there is incumbent Mr... Oh, Holliday. There you go. So he's up for reelection. He would, instead, he would go to start, he would go to start representing Zone 1 if he were reelected in that area. So then now, all of that area would still have a School Board member. And then Zone, the new Zone, Zone 7, whatever you want to call it, would have Mr. Young as their representative on the School Board. Which would in turn, I guess, mean Mr. Tackett wouldn't be a School Board member anymore. Because his term ends in 2014.
And would have no opportunity to run for reelection.
Until 2016. Because that's when that new...
Election.
Oh, well, there's, is there something wrong with not running for reelection? You just can't limit their term as it is. Is that correct?
Right. You cannot abridge...
Right. So you're not abridging anybody's term. Because his term would end in 2014.
But he wouldn't have a chance to run for reelection 2 years later, though.
But there's nothing legal about that. It's just, yeah, I mean, obviously, he'd have to sit out for 2 years if he even wanted to run again.
If the School Board and Road Board were not staggered terms as they are, we wouldn't be talking about any of this. But they are, and that's how they have to be.
Road Board doesn't necessarily have to be, do they? School Board is...
Their statutory authority, I know, that governs the School Board.
Right.
And they do, they are required to be staggered. And to make it easier on the citizens, the voters, the candidates, and the election office, that's why the Road Board numbers were made to match the School Board numbers, and the election cycles also were made to match.
The more I get into this, probably the more confused I get. Maybe my age, but then again, maybe it's complicated as it looks to me.
Anytime you talk about redistricting, whether it's outside of the 10-year window in which we're required to do it at least every 10 years, or any other time in between, you talk about potential issues like these, not only about incumbency, but about overlapping representation and those sorts of issues. You know, we're going to have, we're going to have that in the state general assembly because the, all the state representatives run every 2 years. But the Senate is staggered. So you have odd-numbered senators running 1 year, and then 2 years later, you have the even-numbered senators running. So the ones who are on the ballot for this year are going to be running under the new state senate lines. And once elected, they will be representing the individuals in the new state senate lines. But the ones who are not up for election this year are still going to continue to represent the areas from which they were elected, under the old lines. So it does get pretty confusing.
It's similar to what's happening right now with County Commissioners versus School Board that was just elected.
That's correct.
It's different. The map is different already.
That's correct, because the County Commissioners don't stand for reelection until 2014. You all are still representing the individuals who resided in the old district lines under which you were elected.
Commissioner Stevens, you, if I remember right, had a map, a particular map that you recommended that made a certain amount of sense to a certain amount of people. Does that map still exist? And does it, if it does, did the new election cycle have an effect on that?
Well, I think that Map 4 was the one that I recommended. But Map 2 is also a good one. I think it's a big improvement over what we've got. There isn't a perfect way to change the map without affecting somebody. And like Ms. Lester said, there's one state senator this year who, whose term was up in 2012. But he was drawn into someone's district whose term is up in 2014. And so he's just unable to run for reelection this year. But in 2 years, he'll be able to run again if he so chooses. So I think it's legal. It can be done. I think there's going to be some upset people, whichever way you choose to go. But we have to look at what's best for everybody and get a map that meets the standards that were outlined by the state and by the Redistricting Committee. And I think that either Map 2 or Map 4 will do that. And my understanding was that we weren't going to try to put this into effect until 2018 so that another election cycle would run. And that those who ran in 2016 would know going into it that their districts were going to change, and they needed to be ready for that, instead of doing it sooner and causing chaos now.
So the election cycles in 2014 and 2016 really wouldn't have much of an effect as it related to representation from the current map?
If it goes into effect in 2018, then it wouldn't have any effect at all because we have no idea who will be holding those offices at that time.
Mr. Chairman, just a question. I'm having a hard time getting my head around it, so I need some, need somebody to walk me through it. If they don't take effect until 2018, and yet we have another census in 2020... If they don't take effect until 2018, and yet we have another census in 2020, uh, I guess if we're not gonna do it sooner than later, then why are we doing it? If, well, like I say, within a three-year period, we're gonna have to reconfigure districts again because of population shift.
Chair. I, I tend to agree, and I, as I've thought about this between our last meeting and this meeting, it seems that depending on what the charge of implementation was for this committee, and I'd love for that to be clarified a little bit, you know, not only considering a map, but also bringing a recommendation for implementation. If that is indeed our task, then I think that a truly appropriate recommendation for implementation would be one of these maps and implementation in 2022. And I know that may seem on the surface as a completely vain effort. And yet, what it will do is it will put in front of the redistricting committee that one of the first things they consider are the impact and implementation to the road board and school board zones, as opposed to it being one of the last things that was considered in this last one. By doing that, then we would achieve a compact map. And some of the times when we look even at Scenario 4, the position of the incumbents is so close to the line. Had we the opportunity to adjust the county commission lines, we could eliminate some of these issues. We don't have that opportunity because we're out of step with the redistricting process. So it may be the best recommendation from this committee is one that sets the first item of the agenda for the 2022 redistricting effort. It is a long-range perspective. It's not the most palatable, but it may indeed be the most appropriate.
Robert, do you want to say something?
I can respond to Mr. Stevens' question. I'll be. The reason we want to do it in the middle of the decade is that if we wait until the next redistricting, they're gonna be working with the current maps and try to, you know, possibly squeeze them and change them to make them fit that time, and they will be considered incumbents then. And there's no telling what the map will look like after they get done with them. If we change it in the middle of the decade and try to make some sense of it, I think it'll be a lot easier for them when they come to the redistricting cycle the next time, working with something like this, instead of working with the, the map that snakes all over the county.
I just got something I want to add, Mr. Chairman. And I know we're talking about, I've just heard some comments about, you know, this being the, trying to line up, I guess, the compactness and trying to line up a lot of different things, but the current map we have, that, that last committee, they just met less than, I don't know, less than a year ago, was it? To come up with the current map we have?
It's been two years ago. Year before last, wasn't it, Nicole? 2010?
I'm talking about the last committee we just did. Yeah, just, just months ago. And I, you know, and I don't, I guess, trying to grasp all of it. I mean, I understand it, but to me, again, I keep coming back to, and I know this, one thing I think we, it's like we've, we're charged that we've got to do something with District 20, but the law doesn't say it has to be contiguous. Am I right or wrong? And can, can you answer that one? Does the law, state law says that this has to be contiguous?
It doesn't specifically mention...
But it's not fair to the people being represented.
With regard to school board and road board zones, boundary lines, it doesn't specifically reference those. I think that's open for interpretation.
But what I'm saying, let me ask this question. Before they, just the last committee met, when they were doing the commission districts, this, this one area here that's not contiguous with everything else, has, has that been that way? Was that that way? Proved that way 10 years before? So that was done just in this committee?
Yeah. Historically, Zones 8, 9, and 10 were contiguous.
Because they ran it right in Almaville.
In order to balance the population, District 20 had to go up the county line.
I see.
And that then split that school board zone.
So, so the reason behind us doing that, or was because for the population here? No other reason?
No, there were other reasons. Because it was the communities of interest of the Almaville community.
That's what I was gonna bring up. At the end of the redistricting committee discussions, when we talked about the fact that County Commission District 20 cut all the way across to the western boundary of the Rutherford County line here, to the county line, and actually separated 8 from 9 and 10, there was a proposed solution brought to the table, but it was kind of a last-minute ditch effort, I think, to save it and make everybody happy before we presented the plan by the deadline to the state. And that suggestion was to actually shorten District 20 and bring it over, make the new boundary Almaville Road, and then give the northern half of that western portion there to District 9, and give the southern portion to District 8, which would in turn make 8 and 9 connect. But there were some concerns brought to the table about that intersection there basically being the heart of the historic Almaville community, and that it would divide the Almaville community into three separate county commission districts. And ultimately, that idea met its demise because of that.
Chairman, I, I have a word.
Please.
You know, we were brought here to, you know, study these maps, to look at them. We've done that. We've spent our personal time looking at it. We've come up with, I think, a couple scenarios that are geographically compact. I think they serve the, that purpose. There's gonna be issues like incumbency and, and things of that sort that, in all fairness, is probably above my head, you know? I know probably you guys are more abused at that because you sit on the boards. You know, you know, you know who's up for reelection, and you know who, where everybody lives. I don't. You know, I'm looking at it from geographical standpoint, standpoint. In my opinion, I think we make a couple recommendations sent it by the county commission. Let them, you know, I know we're supposed to consider it. We've looked at the impact that incumbency's had, and of the two maps, it seemed like Map 1 has less impact on incumbency. You know, make a recommendation to the county commission, let them consider it.
I think that's, Aaron asked what our job was, what our charge was. There's 10 things listed, and that's kind of one of them, is to examine maps, but to consider a number of different things, which we're trying our best to consider. And I think most folks, most county commissioners, and most of the department heads that were involved in redistricting to start with, knew that it would be a really hard task. And, and the way I took this assignment was, give us an alternative to look at, and let us see if that alternative makes sense to the commission. What, what I might recommend to you guys is that maybe we don't even have to, to narrow it down to one of the two scenarios that we're looking at. But maybe the thing to do right now is, for me, as chairman of the committee, to take these scenarios, or maybe even one of the two, like Scenario 4, back to the steering committee, county steering committee, which is the committee that asks us to be formed anyway. We're looking at this map. This is what we're looking at. And then give them the statistics that we know them. And then a particular recommendation that it be looked at being implemented somehow, some way, in an election cycle dating at 2018 or something like that. And, and ask for input from that committee, and not meet again until they give us input. Is this what you guys are looking for? Do you want us to go another route? Or really, what do you want us to do from here? So I can do that. I can take it back to the committee and say, we've met, we've met, we've met, this is what we've come up with. Both of those maps look really good. But what it's going to do is to make two entirely different maps when it comes to county commission and, and school and road board, which is going to be something that I know the county commission wants to take a look at. The reason I know that is because I am one, okay? And that's one thing that I would be interested in. So maybe that's a really good point for us to take right now. Let's, let's take this back to the steering committee and say, we've met, we're not recommending anything. But this is the, this is where we've narrowed our point. It is on discussing what would be the most compact map and make more sense for the road board and the school board. And this one would make more sense. And then overlay it with the incumbents that are on there right now, and how it might affect the county up until a cycle that may, that may be able to work through all of those incumbents, which would be at least two cycles away, which would be 2018, something like that. Get, get, just get some input from those guys.
Our charge, our charge from the steering committee, though, is clear, to bring back a recommendation based on our study?
There are 10 of these things. The committee will make a recommendation to the full commission within six months of their first scheduled meeting. Will make a recommendation. It doesn't say what that is, Aaron. Could be that we don't make any recommendations. I, I think that's a recommendation, but I'm not sure that's what they want. They want us to give them something to look at. And, and, and I, I think that's reasonable. And once again, you know, if, if I like Scenario Number 4, okay? It made a certain amount of sense that we recommend that. As a county commissioner, I'm not sure I would support it when it came before me to vote for it. You see what I'm saying? But, and you, you could feel the same way. This could be the one that you like best. But does it mean that, and it may be the one that the steering committee likes best, but it doesn't mean that it's going to get wide support, okay? And it also doesn't mean that you, as an individual, or I as an individual, say that I'm in, I'm in support of changing, wherever it is, this current one to this scenario. But if we are, if you're looking at alternatives, this is the best one we can come up with.
At least we've done our job and gave them something to look at.
Yes, yes.
I guess I disagree a little bit, because I feel like it's, it's somewhat disingenuous for us to recommend something that we wouldn't support. You know, if, if I'm going to serve honorably, even here at this committee level, I would certainly want to move forward an idea that I find is, is worthy. And again, it's why, bearing in mind that the steering committee, the county commission, has the ability, they, they have the authority here to, to amend, move that implementation. I think personally, as we're looking at this, I'm moving in the direction of the Scenario 4, because it is the most compact map. It does achieve most of the things that we're looking at. It has an incredible impact on incumbency, both for the road board and the school board. And based on that impact, in this committee, I think an appropriate, although unexpected likely, recommendation back to the steering committee and/or in time to the county commission is implementation in 2022. Well, what on earth does that mean? And of course, I've explained again, what that means is, this is the first thing to look at. Get to this with the road board and school boards, and do it when you have the full use of all of the tools of redistricting, including moving the lines, to take care of some of these issues. And in that way, then, it's still up to the steering committee or the county commission to say, you know, we like that, but we're just gonna push the issue and make it in 2018, or something of that nature. But this committee, which does have representation of road board and school board members in its makeup, and does have a certain understanding and representation of that incumbency issue, would represent that appropriately by saying, and implement in 2022. I would be comfortable to move in that direction.
You're talking about implementing in 2022 the same districts, county commission districts and school board districts, doing it all at the same time?
Right. Bearing in mind that what we're doing is, we are grouping together the numbers of the county commission districts, that those three county commission districts would be grouped together in a zone. But in 2022, the lines of those county commission districts may move because of population, because of communities of interest, because of all of those things, because of incumbency. And so the fact that Tim Tackett, a fellow school board member, happens to be just outside, and we're gonna end up with two of them together, it wouldn't be hard to go a couple of streets over and send him over into another county commission district, and life goes on.
So you're basically putting more weight on incumbency than compactness?
No, sir, not at all.
That's what I'm hearing.
No, sir, I think I'm putting equal weight on incumbency, because compactness is the recommendation.
Well, you're saying you're waiting till 2022 so that incumbency's not affected as much, or you have the ability to draw the line around that incumbent?
How incumbency is affected would be as, as, would be just as well-considered as it was this past time.
However you, whatever your position is, I'm not in favor of waiting till 2022 to make a recommendation. I think we've been sent here, we've spent our time away from our family, to make a recommendation. Let the steering committee do what they want to with it, you know? And if it, if everybody's in favor of sending your recommendation, waiting till 2022 to redraw the lines, then that's the vote of this committee here.
Just, I want to add one other thing, and I'll, no matter what we do here or what we recommend, recommend here, it still has to be approved by the full commission, is that correct?
Absolutely, positively correct, yeah. My guess is it'd probably go before the steering committee.
And they'd either give a recommendation or not, but steering...
Let me read this thing one more time. The steering committee actually established this thing, but number 10 says the committee will make a recommendation to the full county commission within six months of the first scheduled meeting. I'm not sure how close we are to that six months. I think we're still...
We're star.
Two or three months left. But I, I think, I think making a presentation before the steering committee might be appropriate, just to kind of get some feedback. My, I keep looking at these things, Aaron, and it, it keeps saying things like, "The committee shall not consider altering any commission districts." Shall not consider.
And we are not considering, understand?
Kind of, and not trying to beat to death to kind of bring up what Mr. Stonefield alluded to, and some of what Nicole said. Even if we recommended some of this, some of it wouldn't even be able to take effect till, what, 16 or 18 anyway?
We're, just what Commissioner Stevens said a minute ago, I would agree with him that if you put it back at least two election cycles, if you put it back to 2018, it would be a much easier sale for that to happen as it relates to incumbency and everything else. People would really know what's going on. You'd still have some midterm to deal with, but you could deal with that, I think, at 2016, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. And when, when, when... And when will the, when will we be, will the commission be charged to look at the lines again? When is that?
I'm sorry?
When will the commission be charged again to look at the, at redrawing any district lines or?
The next census will be 2020.
2020.
And then it'll be.
Late 2011.
Yeah. It's about nine years away.
Yeah. I mean, now again, if you do it, if you do something in 18, then you're going to turn around and some stuff's going to change a year or two later.
See, we have no idea what the County Commission would do in the year 2020 or 2011 when it comes to redistricting.
Right.
But if they have a similar scenario to what they had this year, when they looked at incumbency as maybe the number one most important thing, I'm not saying that it was, but it was extremely important to them, it'd probably come up with a very similar scenario to what they did this time. And there's no guarantee that it would be any different. And this committee or nobody else could hold a future county commission to do anything that a current committee or a current county commission agreed to do. If this county commission agreed to make changes in 2020 that look like this, the current county commission, the new county commission in 2020, we don't care. They would make up their own minds as to what they would want to do. So we can't set guidelines on somebody else out there in the future. We've kind of learned that the hard way. And it doesn't necessarily mean that it's good or bad, but I would rather be, I'd rather be more proactive right now and at least this is something that we've looked at and this is the best thing that we've come up with. And this is how it's going to affect incumbents right now. And this might be a scenario to put it into effect. That's what I would kind of like to present to the County Commission, or I guess I could do it before the full commission. I'd like our Vice Chair Ed to have some input in that as well. And I wouldn't want to be the only one on the hot seat. I'd probably come up with some kind of a cold or a flu or something that night and make him do it.
Aaron, we actually, we actually do have the ability to put in place something that the County Commission in 2020 or 2011, 2022, when they redistrict, that they would be bound to because the two decisions are separated. What we are considering is the private act that groups three County Commission districts together into a road or school board zone. Once that decision is made, voted on by the County Commission, changed in the private act at the state and put in place, then they are indeed bound to that at the implementation schedule that we put in place whenever. If we do it in 2016, 2018, all of the spider web of complications that Ms. Lester explained to us in the election cycle are all going to come to bear. If we do it in 2020, they're all going to come to bear. If we do it in 2022, we give the County Commission the ability to be able to eliminate, alleviate, or at least address all of those because there will be a redistricting effort. But what we have done is logically grouped the right three County Commission districts together and bound them to that. That is what we've set in place and we have done good work in this committee at this time. A good recommendation could be Scenario Four with a 2022 implementation, bearing in mind that the County Commission, the Steering Committee, everybody else can move that however they want to and amend that.
It's, I understand what you're saying, but to me, Aaron, we're not accomplishing our task or our goal for right now. We're accomplishing something that another census would actually take care of. And I'm not sure we're approaching our goal or what we were assigned to do right now.
We would at least take a step in that direction if we took what is a passable, implementatable, non-complicated by legal election spider web issues and made that recommendation.
I was under the impression that our main charge was to protect and represent all of the citizens first, make sure they all have equal representation, that everything's contiguous, and not necessarily, again, the incumbency thing just keeps, I know, that's what I keep saying, but, because the last redistricting, basically, you know, they just did it based, they didn't look at any of the school zoning, the board zoning, any of that, they just redistricted it.
They looked legally what they were supposed to look at and they considered the distribution, redistribution of population. That's what they did. But they also looked at incumbency. We, the very first meeting, one of the first things we said is let's take incumbency off the table and let's look at a map that makes sense. We've done that. Now, we're getting hung up on incumbency and other types of things. We're getting hung up on that, you guys. And I can understand why we're getting hung up on it because it is very, very important. You take, I don't care where you're from, the northern end of the county, the southern end of the county, where you're from Eagleville or from Lascasis, you elected a Road Board member, you elected a School Board member, and now we're talking about changing that. And some of those other communities may say, I don't want that changed. So that's what the County Commission is going to be faced with, you guys. And that's what I was saying a little bit earlier. I don't know if, I love to say, I love this map and I think this is what we ought to do. But when it comes to people who voted for the Road Board member and the School Board member that lives in my district, if those people say, I don't like it worth a darn, you're screwing me up to straighten somebody else up, don't support it. That's what's going to happen, okay? So we have to be mindful of what we're talking about right now is incumbency.
But shouldn't that decision be made at a higher level?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
I just need to recommend one. Just say, this is our recommendation, and I like it forward, as you say, we carry that back to the Steering Committee. This is what we recommend.
I agree.
You know, if they approve it, okay. If they don't, you know, I think we've done our job and that's the one I like.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Got a second motion. Now, let's have some discussion. What I would like to do is maybe for Ed and I to go before the Steering Committee over the next month or so, sometime in October, maybe, or first of November, something like that. Being mindful that we've got a pretty big election coming up here in just a few weeks and we really need for our election administrator to concentrate on that. And then for some time after that, that office is going to still be extremely busy in certification and other types of things. So we, I think our, what I'd like to do is for our next step to be before the Steering Committee. I could change my mind after spending some time with Mayor Burgess. We may just take it before the County Commission. And what I'd like to do is to also create a couple of scenarios based upon one of these maps. Maybe the 2016, 18 election cycle and maybe the 2020, 22 election cycle and just say that's some of the things that we've talked about and some of the things that we looked about.
I like it. I mean, that makes good sense. I mean, really, I like it. I don't think that's our, I don't think that falls onto us to recommend that we wait that long.
Chairman, I.
It's a good idea, though. I like the idea.
Do we, rather than just giving them one map, say, you know, map number two was their second alternative, just to give them some more information to look at, rather than just say, here's all we, you know, we felt like was the best scenario?
Any of those things makes sense.
I would like to do that if you're willing to amend your motion.
We'll give them, let's concentrate on one because we can put certain School Board and other elected officials in a map and not confuse it by putting two or three up there. What we can do is distribute the second one and say, this one was also considered, and you may all take a look at that one as well. And we can also come up with some other types of things there. So over the next few weeks, I think what should happen over the next few weeks is that allow Vice Chairman Phillips and myself to get together and make sure we know what we're talking about as far as the election cycle. We'll rely on folks like Commissioner Stevens to help us with that. We'll also rely on Aaron, too, to kind of help us with the 20 and 22 cycle versus the 16 and 18 cycle and just say, these are the things that we've talked about and the things that we're, this is where we are right now. Do you want us to do anything else? And if not, we're prepared to make this recommendation, we'll be prepared to make this recommendation after our next meeting and leave it in your hands. What would happen is that if we disseminate one of these maps to the County Commission and also to the news media, it will give weeks of opportunity for the general public to take a look at it and also give us input, whether it's this committee or the County Commission as well. So we won't be springing it on anyone. We'll release that and say, this is what we're looking at and we'll be making not a recommendation, but at least a presentation. That was also one of our charges, too, is that we'll keep the County Commission up to date on where we are. So that could be, that could be our next step.
So at this point, we would take the motion that is on the table and solicit some input from Mayor Burgess, the Steering Committee, others, but then come back again before we make a recommendation. Am I understanding that correctly?
I'm not 100% sure that we go before the Steering Committee. This thing says County Commission. Our charge says County Commission. I'd like to talk to Mayor Burgess, tell him where we are, see if he thinks we ought to go through the Steering Committee and make that presentation first, or just take it to the full County Commission. Whichever one of those is what we'll do. But.
Would we do that after another meeting to hear back from that?
What we'll do is take it to them because part of this thing says that we'll keep them informed, I won't even say probably at every meeting.
Progress, yeah, multiple progress.
But we haven't done that yet. So this will be a progress report to them. This is what we're looking at.
So is the motion on the table, then, a recommendation or a progress report?
I have recommend map four with a report by Commissioner Phillips and Ms. Ed Phillips to Steering Committee or the Commission on the recommendation of the county mayor.
Can we change that to say?
I like it. Yeah, and that gives us a little. I don't need to do that. I'm in my motion by saying be our.
Just remove that motion for a second and make that a new motion.
Let me take that motion off the floor and then just make a new motion that's probably easier for.
And the new motion would be not, would be to concentrate on Scenario Four, but not to make the recommendation, but to update the County Commission. Okay? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then we'll come back after that and have our next meeting. That's going to be weeks away, okay? Probably not until November or something like that. And that'll give not only us the opportunity for input back from commissioners, but also input from the general public as well. This is going to be out there. Probably the news media will probably even release some of these things. So we're going to have to be prepared to answer those type of questions. And what I'd kind of like to do is for us to get together, maybe even talk over the phone and come up with what, how it would affect incumbents 16 and 18 and 20 and 22.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you something, though. Could we do that? I mean, sunshine levels and whatnot. Obviously, we don't want to try to violate.
I'm real good at saying, I don't know.
Yeah.
And asking for someone like Nicole to.
Some legal help on that. I mean, obviously, we want to make sure we stick with that.
We'll have to get with our county attorney, too, from.
So now we're going to vote on giving a proper, another committee our progress report of exactly where we stand and looking at.
Concentrating on Scenario Four.
Getting their feedback.
I need a second.
I got a second.
My motion is concentrate on map four with an update to the commission before the next study committee meeting.
That gives us a little flexibility, too, okay?
And what's our deadline for the very last meeting we could technically have before we made that recommendation?
I don't know.
So I thought it was, I thought we had nine months. Six, okay. Where'd I get nine months at?
I think it's nine. Robert says he thinks it's nine.
I guess so.
You've had it, I've heard many, huh?
Yeah.
I don't know whether that update will be before the County Commission or the Steering Committee, but it'll probably be in October for the Steering Committee and if not, probably even November.
So we do have nine months.
It is nine months.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm starting, I'm going to come up real quick with the very situation.
Mr. Chairman, the original motion, that's where I got the nine months from. Apparently, the original motion says we have nine months. So I just want to, I just want to know how long we got left.
Nine months is good.
The next steering meeting is October 1st.
Let me just talk to Mayor Burgess before we do that. This thing says update the County Commission and not the Steering Committee, so let's just see what we have there first. Kind of got a clear idea of what we're doing. Updating instead of making any recommendations at this point, we won't make any recommendations unless we agree on it at a future committee meeting, okay?
Take a vote on that.
Yep. So we're ready.
Call for the question.
Okay, we're ready for that question. Always in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposition to that motion carries. Let me take a quick look here, you guys, at your calendar, if you would. Thanksgiving is on the 22nd, the week after that, Wednesday, the 28th, November 28th. That sounds like a long time off, and I know that it is, but it also would give us just a tremendous amount of opportunity to get feedback, you from people and also us from the County Commission, taking a look at this and seeing if they like it. We will pass out Scenario Number Two as well, but we'll concentrate on four.
So the 28th is when our next study meeting is?
November 28th and unless somebody feels like we need to meet before then, and if I find out we do need to meet before then, we'll just sit one up sometime in late October, okay?
That'd be two more, two County Commission meetings before.
So once again, pencil in that date. That's Wednesday after Thanksgiving. If I'm not mistaken, that's the 28th.
That is correct.
At 5:30?
Yes. And once again, it may not be, may not be, we might need to change that date and if so, we'll get in touch with everybody, I mean, I don't know. You guys can just kind of get a feel for what the redistricting committee went through. Their hands were even tied a lot more than our hands are tied because of, once again, the, the incumbency type of thing and understand that. My concern, Aaron, about getting it out there in the future would be that it could be the exact same thing, that incumbency could be one of the most important things and maybe, maybe a private act could change that. So we'll try to get a little legal advice on that, too, okay?
Will we get a copy of what you're going to present?
At least bullet points, you know, yeah.
I'll do everything I can to get that out to you.
At least bullet points, yeah. We don't need the whole thesis.
All right. But once again.
Just because you say it's going to be, it may possibly be in the media, I don't want to be here in the headlights if someone asks me a question.
You've got your maps, right. What we'll do is take a more in-depth look at the map and how it affects those elected officials that are in the scenario that we're going to choose.
I'd like to know, my, my point, I'd like to know whoever you're going to get two of, I'd like to know when that's going to be. I'd like to know when that's going to be. I wouldn't mind sitting in on it just to see what they throw at you.
Mike?
Also, is there any material that you want to present to that committee? I can have available on the sharepoint site for anybody that has downloaded also.
We will send out a notice to all the committee members to update you to where we are.
Yeah.
We'll get busy on that and probably have some information in a couple of weeks, okay?
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Aaron.
Mr. Chairman.